A roll call.
Absolutely, and I apologize, in the text of the agenda.
The chair.
Change over, but we. At the top.
Um.
So. Chair Card?
Present.
Vice Chair Brothers?
Present.
Commissioner Gold is absent. Commissioner Gold is absent. Um, Commissioner Koff still?
Here.
And Commissioner Kretzinski?
Here.
You have, you have four members in the court.
We can do together. I think so. How can I? Members of the. Council going out. And then. There's blocking and. How it. Yeah, we're sure. But I'm gonna be back. Do anything. Council, because that can also be have those three leaders, federal leaders, and. Think that, I mean, and note that it is not long, decision making. It was classified by the way that let's compare to that law. Um, actually, we are, as I said, actually. So if you guys want to. Do it.
And. Oh, yes. Uh, with that, uh, we have, uh, our first order of business, uh, which is asking if there are people either present here or online, uh, who would like to, uh, raise un-agenda items. Seeing nobody in, uh, in, in the old schoolhouse, let's call upon our reader.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Um, I'm not sure who was the previous speaker before you started talking, but we heard absolutely nothing for those of us that are online. So if, if the people could please speak into the microphones and make sure they're on, that would be helpful for, you know, for people that watch the video afterwards and for the people that are online. Thank you very much. Um, my question is something that is, uh, something that was taken off the agenda. Um, if, if you can let the public know why that particular item was taken off the agenda, that would be helpful because, uh, and I do appreciate you putting a revised agenda and even noting that it's a revised agenda. And so thank you very much, but it'll be really interesting to know why that item was taken off. Thank you.
Um, are there, uh, any other, uh, items or that would like to be heard or people would like to be heard in advance of, uh, our first item?
There are no other hands raised.
Uh, well, we could address the, uh, reader's question during a later point. Uh, if there's a straightforward answer that might be helpful, uh, to address now.
It's quite straightforward. The, um, the mid, mid, midpendent open space had requested the informational item to go forward. In, in discussions, they felt like they should work with staff to flush out what, what would actually be coming before the commission at some point, before they made sort of an open-ended, uh, uh, presentation. So therefore they're, they're going to be working with staff to refine that and bring it, bring it back to you at some future point.
That is, uh, very helpful.
Ask a question on that. It was listed as a presentation. They have no permit pending, correct? So it's just a informational briefing?
Correct. They have no, they have no, and that's why, um, that's why they wanted to, to get a little more substances into their project before they, before they come forward. So there is no permit pending, nothing's been submitted for any, any project whatsoever. Only, only conversations and, and they want to flush that out better before they come to the commission.
Thanks.
I can leave it on. Nobody's remembering.
Are there any items, uh, associated with the former, uh, agenda is matter that we, we, we seem to be talking about this now? Uh, the only item that I would like to further find is, prior to that meeting, we could have a discussion of what the appropriate role of the planning commission is, uh, these are the, uh, the proposed mid pen project. The concept, uh, which will at some point become a, uh, a project that will either come before us in some, in some form.
That's, that's noted, Mr. Chair. I will make sure that that's the first part of the presentation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Uh, the next item, uh, that we have, uh, is the appeal of architectural site control. Uh, decision to approve the architectural review and design permit, constructing new residents, detached, uh, garage, detached pool house, detached office, significant tree removal, pool, landscape improvements, hardscape improvements at eight fifty-seven, uh, Westridge Drive. File number is, um, is identified. This is a continued item from, uh, October. If I have that right, and the planning commission is sitting in its capacity as the board of adjustments. Do you have a staff report?
Yes. My name is Jamie Born, and the item is actually continued from the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, uh, planning commission hearing, uh, to a date certain, which is this evening. My name, I'm not sure if I said that already, is Jamie Born. I'm a consultant planner with, uh, for the town of Portola Valley. And the item before you is, as I mentioned, the continued item, uh, for the board of adjustment. Uh, the planning commission acting as a board of adjustment. The appeal is, uh, to the July eighth, twenty twenty-four ASCC meeting for a new residence, site development permit at eight fifty-seven Westridge. The appellant application was received on July twenty-second of twenty twenty-four, and, uh, direction was given by, uh, the board of adjustment to the applicant, um, which I will elaborate on further in the presentation update. The applicant submitted the initial application for eight fifty-seven Westridge to the plan, to town planning on November second, twenty twenty-three. Although the proposal received conditional approvals from Planning, Engineering, Geology, uh, Woodside Fire Protection District and County Environmental Health. All departments will again review this proposal at the time of building permit submittal. At the July eighth, uh, ASCC meeting, the ASCC also added additional conditions requiring review at the time of building permit, submittal by two ASCC members. Uh, at the initial appeal meeting, as I mentioned before, uh, the AS, well, sorry, uh, the commission provided, uh, direction to the applicant to update information related to the ASCC conditions, and also to revisit the detached garage design, uh, through consideration of height, location, screening, and orientation. The commission directed the applicant to submit the updates for a review by two ASCC members. An ad hoc committee was created on October fourteenth at the regularly scheduled ASCC meeting, and the members appointed to the committee include, Commissioner Gina Dixon and Vice Chair Dana Breen. Just, I'm trying to change to the next slide. This slide, um, shows it is some background, um, on the location for eight fifty-seven Westridge. It is a two-point-eight-six acre parcel zoned RE dash two-point-five. The lot sits between Penn and Drive and Goya Road. Soils types include SBR, SUN, and PS. The parcel is bound to the east by one eighty-eight, uh, Favanio, and to the south by an undeveloped lot on one eighty-nine Favanio, eight seventy-five Westridge, shown here, uh, is located to the west and eight thirty-five Westridge, which is the appellant's lot is located to the north and then portions of the east of, of the lot at eight fifty-seven Westridge. The site's accessed from Westridge, Westridge Drive, uh, down a long driveway that slopes upward to a relatively flat portion of the site. It's spanning east to west. The rear yard slopes downward and is where the PS soils are located and that are susceptible to landslides and not suitable for building. The, uh, property owners at eight fifty-seven Westridge Drive filed an appeal on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, to the ASCC decision to approve the ASCC's July approval, uh, of the proposal for the new residence detached accessory structures, significant tree removal landscaping, hardscaping, and site development permit. The appellant listed the reasoning for the appeal in the appeal application that is listed within this presentation slide, and provided additional information included in the September sixteenth and November sixth commission staff reports. At the September sixteenth hearing, the app, appellant provided a presentation outlining the basis of the appeal, followed by a presentation by the applicant explaining the project proposal and background. The commission continued the appeal to a certain date, and the applicant submitted updated information per the direction of the commission that has been reviewed by the ASCC ad hoc committee. In order to make the findings, uh, in order for the board of adjustment to make the findings set forth in the appeal, um, the board of adjustments shall, shall consider the reasons for the appeal and specify where there was or was not an error in the interpretation of the official from whom the appeal was made. The first condition, so, sorry, let me back up. Slides five through eight, this being the fifth slide, uh, include the applicant updates and the ASCC ad hoc committee responses. The first condition of approval requires an invasive plant management, uh, an invasive management plan at the time of building permit submittal. The applicant indicated that eight hours of labor was performed on September twenty-sixth and remaining invasive plant removal will be completed when conditions are suitable as part of demolition and construction. In response to the second and third conditions regarding the fencing plan that come, that complies with the town's fence ordinance and signed agreement for any fencing along a shared parcel line, the applicant updated the proposal by removing proposed fencing with the exception of a four-foot wood wire fence, uh, at the entry and, um, in an entry gate, twenty-five feet from the parcel line that extends northerly for fifty feet along the shared parcel line along the appellate's parcel, uh, at, by, at eight thirty-five Westridge Drive. The proposed fencing plan, the updated proposal, sorry, the, the proposed fencing plan is shown here in yellow and blue, uh, in the presentation slide. All other fencing is existing and, and, sorry. And no changes are proposed. The updated proposal eliminates the potential for wildlife entrapment, double fencing, and ensures wildlife corridor access is not blocked. Fencing along the shared parcel line, uh, at the northerly portion of the parcel for fifty feet would require a signed agreement with the parcel owners at eight thirty-five Westridge and eight fifty-seven Westridge Drive per ASCC condition of approval one C, and the approval letter dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. This is slide six, and in response to the fourth condition, uh, that two ASCC committee members review the updated arborist report in relation to significant tree impacts associated with the proposed septic system. The applicant had the topographic survey updated to properly reflect through locations near the proposed septic system. The applicant and project arborist maintain the septic system plan is not expected to have an impact on the health of the trees, and that excavation for septic lines within the drip line will be under the supervision of the project arborist. County Health will also review the updated information at the time of building permit submittal, which is also listed as a condition of ASCC approval. Uh, a comment letter was received from one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine Favanio neighbors and included in the staff report, and I've since, just prior to this meeting, received a response that, uh, that the, um, the neighbor reviewed the staff report and is so far satisfied with the, the condition and the updating of the, uh, tree location and, um, and reviewed the ASCC ad hoc committee's response that it is satisfactory and feel satisfied with that response.
Sorry, was that the neighbor, Peter Luthman?
Yes, correct. So I received that at six thirty PM around, or six thirty-five PM, and just saw it right before this meeting. So I just wanted to note that. But again, um, the environmental health is also reviewing this, and I am sending, and I'm sending the conditional, the, the approval letter with the condition to, uh, at Gardo Diaz of County Health so that we ensure that this is also, um, addressed at the time of building permit submittal. So just to state that, um, the sixth condition, let me make sure, no, sorry, the fifth condition. Uh, ASCC condition includes retention of the coast live oak number, tree number thirty-two located near the proposed pool. The applicant maintains retention will be attempted, and the project arborist will continue to review and provide mitigation measures to retain and protect the tree over the course of construction. The sixth condition to reorient the bike storage will be discussed, uh, as part of the commission direction to revisit the design of the garage just, uh, during the next slide. The seventh, uh, condition, the applicant updated the lighting plan and removed all fixtures as conditioned by the ASCC and staff at the July eighth ASCC meeting. In response to the direction given by the commission at the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four hearing, uh, that also satisfies the sixth ASCC condition, the commission directed the applicant to revisit the design of the garage. In response, the applicant moved the front door from the storage area to the left side of the garage, uh, hold on, to the front of the garage from the left side and added an interior door inside the garage. There still is an interior or an exterior door on the left side, or at the front of the garage on the left side, but not on the side of the garage that orients toward the appellate's, uh, parcel. I hope that I made that clear. The bike storage area is now located at the rear of the garage and, and access from the interior of the garage. The overall height of the garage has been reduced from twenty-three feet and three-quarter inches to twenty-one feet and three-and-a-half inches. The orientation of the garage has been slightly shifted and moved five feet farther from the northerly shared parcel, uh, with the appellate, that eight thirty-five Westridge. Landscaping updates provided by the applicant in relation to the direction to revisit the garage design include clarification that the proposed plantings shall not fully obstruct the sightlines between the appellate's parcel and eight fifty-seven Westridge near the proposed garage. The applicant maintains the fence line area now contains plantings that are shorter shrubs and set further back. The landscaping plan has been reviewed by the ASCC ad hoc committee and found to be satisfactory at, as part of the conditions of approval to ASCC members will also review the landscaping plan at the time of building permits submittal. Staff reviewed the basis of the appeal as it relates to the, to SEQA and finds the project will not have a significant effect on the environment and is exempt from SEQA pursuant, pursuant to one five three zero three for single-family residential development. There are no unusual circumstances that qualify as an exemption to the SEQA process, sorry, an exception. There is no development proposed within unstable soils on site. Drainage on site does not qualify as an unusual circumstance, and the proposal will be reviewed again at the time of building permit submittal to meet MPDES requirements, which require all stormwater runoff, runoff to be treated on site. At the time of building permit submittal, the town also agreed prior to the appeal to provide the appellant's independent geotechnical engineering letter that lists the appellant's concerns, uh, near the tennis court to the town's engineering and geology consultants. Staff finds the proposal consistent with the town's general plan and zoning code. The updated plan now meets the town's fence ordinance. At the time of building permit submittal, the plans will be reviewed again by planning and ASCC members to ensure compliance. At the time of building permit submittal, planning staff also required the applicant to provide, uh, the current appraised value for the tennis court and prove that the proposal meets the requirements to allow for the tennis court to remain. Otherwise, the applicant will be required to bring the tennis court into compliance with the current zoning code regulations. The proposal meets the landscaping ordinance, height requirements, and setback requirements, with the exception of the tennis court that is a legally non-conforming structure. Regarding vegetation preservation, ridge lines, and accessory structures, the ASCC determines significant tree removals and the proposed detached garage and other structures comply with the town design guidelines. Public notice was mailed to all property owners within a three-hundred-foot radius and posted in the local newspaper on September fifth, twenty twenty-four. The agenda and staff report were posted on the town's website on Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The meeting continued to a certain date, did not require noticing, re-noticing of the appeal. A neighbor letter was received, as I mentioned, uh, prior to the continued appeal and included as an attachment to the staff report. Sorry about that. That, I meant to already have changed that. Staff recommends that the board of adjustment deny the appeal, uh, and uphold, uh, the ASC's July eighth, twenty twenty-four decision to approve the project subject to the revised conditions that include the updated garage design based on the direction provided by the board of adjustment on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, indicated in the draft resolution provided in attachment one. Additional conditions of approval may be added by the commission and included in the final resolution. The presentation, this presentation will be followed by a ten-minute or less, uh, appellate presentation and update by the applicant, uh, for eight fifty-seven West, Westridge Drive. Town staff, the appellant applicant, and ASCC member Dana Breen are available to, uh, after the presentation to answer commissioner questions. Uh, Commissioner Dana Breen is one of the ad hoc committee members, um, and Gina Dixon, Commissioner Dixon is, uh, was unable to attend the presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Are there questions from staff?
Are we going to hear the, um, appellant and applicant first and then ask questions, or?
Uh, my thought was to ask questions of staff first.
I have none right now.
Um, has there been any communication, uh, with the appellant and staff?
There has been one email received by the appellant, and I informed the appellant to, uh, that, to share any, uh, after reading the staff report, because it had not been received at that point in time, to, uh, utilize all the information, uh, as part of the appellant's presentation this evening. So we will be hearing, uh, from the appellant after, after this.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, Jamie.
Jamie, one issue that we, uh, discussed was that there was in fact a violation of municipal code, a municipal code called for, uh, a penalty of some form, and that was, had, that was to be addressed at the time, uh, of, uh, I think that's a different. Have I, have I got this?
Is in this with the property on Penn and Drive.
I think you're absolutely right.
The trail, the trail thing is what you're.
Rail. It's a different property, Mr. Chairman.
I understand. I feel you on this one.
I, I appreciate your clarifying the, uh, the matter. I do remember that. I have no further, uh, items. Do we have any, um, do you have, uh, members of the, uh, ASCC? No members of the ASCC. I was. Yeah, I think that's right. Do you have the appellate?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to be the timer for the, of the ten minutes?
Yeah.
You can come to the table or the podium, whoever you feel most comfortable.
All right. First of all, I wanted to thank everybody for providing the venue for this conversation. I very, very much appreciate your effort and your opportunity to hear us out. I, I think that this is a testament to a functioning town governance, frankly, that we've had multiple leaps on this, and we've been able to actually have our, our issues considered and our concerns addressed. It's, uh, gratifying that that's the case here, and, uh, it's not lost on us as a family and particularly the rest of the town. Um, I wanted to give particular gratitude to Carter, Dana, and Gina for getting involved here and trying to create, uh, forum for active dialogue and good compromises. And they have, they have actually worked on this in a considerable way that, that I think has made a difference. Um, the last thing is, uh, we haven't had any direct contact with the neighbors, but we've been working with the ASCC, uh, committee that was assigned to this, Dana and Gina, and, uh, we remain open to any constructive conversations at any point in time. We've made that clear. So, um, just to remind everybody what we've been asking for, which is, there were a handful of things. I told you it wasn't a huge issue that we were running into, but we were having a breakdown in conversation. So we wanted to eliminate the unnecessary fencing. We wanted to eliminate hedges and preserve sightlines along the property boundary, which is our Western Hills view from our house. The third thing is we want to reduce the significant tree destruction. The fourth is redesigning the garage to minimize its impact. And the fifth is to mitigate the tennis court's impact on our property. It is the top of the slide. I'll move on through it and repeat it. We'll do it again, but it has caused, in our geologist's structural engineer's opinion, sliding on our property. It was built in nineteen fifty-six. We've been an active contributor to that, and we're trying to make sure that whatever happens up there doesn't aggravate it anymore. So where are we today? The fences are in great shape. No, no concerns there. We've managed to save a significant number of trees, which we very much appreciate. Trees numbered eight, nine, ten, twenty-two, and thirty-two have all been slated to remain, and we think that's terrific. We think it provides an optimal level of screening between the properties, and it retains significant trees, some of which are, you know, over a hundred years old and provide great shading in the area. Um, sixty-seven and sixty-eight were absent from the original, uh, arborist report, but were added, and we're, we're very pleased to see that they've been added and retained, so we appreciate that. The third thing is, um, limiting the hedges and the preserving sightlines. The hedge has been removed, but I have some questions I wanted to bring up. And if Dana's on the line, maybe she can answer it. It's about the kind of planting that's going in. I don't quite understand it. Um, and then last thing, we talked about the reorientation of the garage design. It's actually what I had asked for in April of twenty-four in many ways. There's still some things I'd like to see, but it makes a big difference. It helps us in a considerable way, and the biggest reason why I'm sure the architect will help on this, the peak of the roof faced our. the peak of the roof faced our master bedroom in the original design. And now with the change in angle, we get the slope of the roof, meaning the peak is now something like 17 feet further from our window. It's a massive change and very much appreciated. And so I wanted to make sure that the commission knew that that was the case. And then lastly, I, I still have concerns about the tennis court. And we've talked about it in more detail, but I wanted to leave that out there. Just to remind anybody where tree number 12 is. It's between our house and the garage. It's a significant tree. It's listed in the arborist report as being suppressed by tree number 11, but otherwise in fair health. If we take out tree number 11, which I think we all support because it's a dead tree, I think that would actually improve the health of tree number 12. Tree number 12 is the tree on the left side of these two trees pictured in the right-hand photograph. So we're asking that tree number 12 be preserved. It's a blue oak tree. The next topic is around the hedges. In the original plan sent by the neighbor, they described the myrtle, M-Y-R-C-A-L, in the left-hand photograph. In the revised plans, they are including M-Y-R-C-A-L in the right-hand photo. And I don't quite understand if it's a different, like it's a dwarf version of it, or it's a different plant, or they just got the photo wrong the first time. And so obviously, the photo on the left is something that we're trying to avoid. The photo on the right is much more reasonable and I think appropriate. And so we're just trying to make sure we understand which of these two myrtle edges we're going to get. So put that in the context of the change in the design. We've got a property boundary, which is more than 200 feet there, and it was designed with that first left-hand side graph of the myrtle. And they adjusted it to create sightlines on the right-hand graph. You can see where the red circles are. The X represents where our bedrooms are. And those sightlines are preserved with those gaps. And if the plants are low, but if they're high, it starts to impinge upon the sightlines and create shadows in our yard. So just wanted to point that out. There's a significant improvement, but I don't know what we're talking about yet. And so I'll wait for someone from the ASC to comment on that. This is an artist's drawing of the kind of planting. And if the plantings are consistent with this, we're comfortable with it. But what that means is they have to be consistent with this, not small gaps and insignificant with very high plantings. We talked about the garage height, and just to go back to the orientation of the garage, I think that's the significant difference we're talking about. It's about a 25-degree shift in the garage. And that's what makes the difference because it changes the visibility from our side of the lot. It is actually grown in footprint because there's a, I think a breezeway that's part of it. I can't quite tell from the architect's drawing. I'm going to focus in on it's, it's this piece on the right-hand side. We're still hoping that we can get rid of that and leave the garage a little further off the property line because we don't know what the purpose of that is. If the white storage is in the back and trash storage is on the left-hand side towards our house, then, you know, what is the breezeway for? On the tennis court, we still have a significant concern on the tennis court and believe it's a nonconforming amenity that is existing and has been abandoned. And it was abandoned even before the current family bought it, bought it. And it was not usable. There was a wall that had fallen down. External fences were actually held up by guide wires. And it is a, a significant concern on the lands, the lands that are below it. I'm going to not belabor it because we talked about it once before, and I think I know how you guys feel. But just as a reminder, it was abandoned in 2020 when the Dewey family, which was the plan of record when we bought our house, had intended to remove it and turn it into a parking area. That's what we thought we were going to have with the neighbor. This is the existing code and definition. Structure designed for nonformal use, for the nonformal use of the structure, which was originally designed for a nonformal use, has ceased for 12 months or more. Such structure shall not thereafter be put to a conforming, a nonconforming use. And the cessation can be with or without intent. And this had actually with intent. And just to make it clear, we're talking about the half circle on the right-hand side at the top. You notice it actually goes into the property line of the 857 West Ridge property. The slide starts on their property and flows into our property, and it's caused by drainage of the port. And it's caused quite a significant amount. And you saw Jane James' presentation, the type of soil that we have. And so we are sensitive to not having further damage. And this is just some picture evidence of what we're talking about. That in the, you can see where my cursor is. That's where the fence had fallen down. And on the, on the right-hand side, that in the circle is the drainage pipe which dumps water into the belly between my house and the tennis court. So just, just as a.
Sorry, you have one minute, one minute remaining.
Just in summary, we're asking that the planning commission take this to heart and make sure that whatever comes out of building permits respects the current code and also the, the issues that we're dealing with. I have just a couple of additional considerations. Jamie had mentioned, and I wanted to point out, there are other existing nonconforming elements to the design here. There are two places in the driveway which go into the setback. And one of those two places that goes into the setback is actually called for an expansion. And so I don't believe that's allowed, but I'm also going to leave it to the planning commission because I think it's in their purview to make an exception. I've highlighted in yellow, they're both existing nonconforming elements. The last thing is, in Jamie's table, she's got a change in the setback. The setback is actually not started by the pavement of the tennis court. It's the fence of the tennis court, which is part of the structure of the tennis court. And so it doesn't change. And this is just for the record, but it should remain at 14 feet, 7 inches, not shift to 17 feet, 11 inches. I just want that for the record in case it comes up again. The tennis court fence represents where the setback's being violated.
Your time has expired.
I wanted to ask if there are any present questions of the board.
I have one.
You had the picture of the myrtle tree, I think it was. And if I remember right, the original picture with the tall hedge was from the original submission from the, from the applicant. And then you had these other pictures. Were those there in the, okay. It's, it's probably okay.
Are there any other questions for the? I would like to ask if there are members of the ASCC who may be on the telephone here, perhaps at 650-430-56, which seems like a familiar telephone number.
You should be allowed to speak at this point.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes.
There you go. I just want to reemphasize that the comments that Gina and I made when we went back out were in response to the planning commission comments of your meeting. So, you know, we didn't look at the tennis court. We didn't look at things that were not assigned to us. And you see, I'm sure in your packet, you saw Gina and my memo.
Yes.
May I ask if there is a clarification on the nature of the myrtle?
From me?
If, if that's not an appropriate question, Commissioner, then it may be that there is a.
It's a California native shrub, and it works. But, you know, ASCC, I believe, is going to be taking another look at the landscape plan, you know, at, at the end of the project. So, you know, I, you know, we do support sort of less landscape. We don't want to see a hedge in between those properties.
And from your perspective, the myrtle, however spelled.
Mirica Californica. You know, I find it, I, I, I find it variable in, in terms of its success. So, but, you know, that's, that's me. It's a California native. It's a good choice. I hope it works.
There we go.
But Dana, do you have any insight into why the appellant had two pictures in the packets? One looked super hedge-like.
We, we, we have the applicant, yeah, I, I had the same issue. And.
They're, they're completely different. Okay. They're completely different shrubs. So I can't help you yet.
Picture was wrong in the first one. Is what Dana's saying. But I think Dana's point's the important one, which is they're still required to look at it again. So hopefully you get the, get the right one that time.
And in principle, it could be an acceptable choice. Commissioner, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, but I'm here to, to answer your questions. I mean, I saw a lot of invasives on the property, but that's another thing that we're going to handle at the end of the project. So it would be better if they did it ahead of time so that there aren't, you know, it doesn't increase. But, you know, that's not my department.
Dana, do you happen to know, they said that they did a day's worth of weeding in September. Was that to get the diatrichia?
I don't know, but I, I saw a lot of diatrichia and a lot of euphorbia on the project. So maybe they did it somewhere else on the project, but they need to do a lot more.
Thank you.
I have one other question for, for you, Dana. Condition E is about trying to keep tree number 32, which is the one that's sort of by the current pool, I believe.
Yes.
And so originally, the conservation committee had recommended preserving it. And then after that, there was an arborist report that indicated that it was high risk of leader failure, and they recommended it to be removed. And I, I don't know if you recall the discussion about that in the ASCC meeting and if you have any insight on why ASCC has condition E to retain that tree.
The retention of that tree for the people across the canyon is very important. And there was only one branch that we felt was, was an issue. And I, I think the removal of that tree will completely expose this house to the people on the other side of the canyon. And I think it's, you know, also, uh, uh, tree surgeons, tree companies are sort of, if they see something, they have to, they, they have to say something about removals. I mean, it's about, you know, I, I just, we do, we think that tree needs to be maintained. We do think for tree 14 that Ben was talking about earlier, we also think that tree should be retained. It's a blue oak. But the one down by the swimming pool, that would be a game changer to lose that tree. So we think it, the, the one limb in question should be removed. And then let's just see how it goes.
Thank you.
I have a question. Dana, you referred to a memo that you and Gina wrote. I actually did not see that. What I saw was a report that listed all the conditions and then described the ad hoc committee response.
Maybe Jamie can help with that answer?
With the page, Ronnie just told me. I think I'm going to find it. Thanks.
Page 381 of the packet, Jamie? The red line answers.
Give me your muted.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I had sent it in the email where it begins. It's following Attachment 8, which began, began, I believe, on 352 around. And so it numbered the ninth is just right after that.
I see it. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I think that's very helpful. I don't believe we have any further questions, Commissioner Breen. I think, thank you. I believe we could benefit from applicants, perhaps architect. And if you could state your name.
All right. Good evening. My name is Adam Biddle with Architecture Allure. I'm the architect of the project. I'm here on behalf of the owners. They were unable to attend this evening. First, thanks for taking on this project, ASCC staff. I know it's been a long process, super helpful. I do appreciate the kind words mentioned by the appellant. Patient, maybe a roundabout way, but I think, you know, a lot of things and improvements have been made in this, and I hopefully mitigated most of the concerns. Mostly, I just wanted to address a couple of the questions I just heard. So I specifically told the landscape architect that picture was awful and just confusing everyone. And so he drew the sketch that you saw, the non-artistic sketches of the landscape architect, and then accompanied with appropriate pictures that represented both the layout and his sketch. So that first one of the hedges was just, I don't know who it is firm threw that in there initially, but it was just causing confusion. There's no hedges. Second one, just on, you know, tree 32. I'm, I'm not an arborist by any means. We had our arborist give conservation community a letter. And then he gave response that I put in the response letter here about the ways to retain that tree, propping it up, pruning. He does not think removing that limb is going to lead to the success of the health of the tree based on its size. So the info's in there. I'll leave that to the experts at the town as an arborist as well that wants to review the recs. But it's in there to remain, and it will be, you know, we'll do whatever we can to mitigate. But the project arborist will be the one to oversee it. And so he gave the recs on how to attempt to, to retain it. Beyond that, I'm here just to answer any questions.
Are there questions?
Not from me.
Just on that tree 32, so would you say that you're somewhat comfortable with the way things stand now? That it's a condition that will be reviewed by the?
My own, my own personal opinion, I'm, I'm not super comfortable that. I, I mean, I appreciate the, the opinions, the actual, it's a beautiful tree, right? But I also appreciate an arborist giving technical information. And I'm sure there's a town arborist or consultant who's also going to review the recs versus, you know, public opinion. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a third-party bystander in this. I go off what they recommend. So he gave, these are the ways to attempt to retain it along with the demolition that's going to happen around. So it's nothing that we haven't dealt with before. He's just recommending that limb needs to be propped up. It can't be removed.
And are you referring to the February 2024 letter, or was there something?
There were multiple responses back and forth, first with the conservation committee. And then after, we were told to address this based on the conditions of approval. It's in there, the new arborist recommendation. It's in there on the letter. He basically said cable leaders perform crown reduction pruning, prop heavy lateral trunk, continue to assess risk of co-dominant leader fault. So he said it's a. Tree has good vigor. Its structure is poor though and unsafe, which is widely renewable recommended, recommend, recommended. Pruning is unlikely to mitigate the leader failure. Leader removal is not an option due to the size. So. Again, I'm just regurgitating what the arborists. So I'll leave that to the town and arborists to go. But yeah, it's, it's remaining.
While, while we're on the topic, can I ask a question to staff on the same topic? So if, if this condition remains. Is that the end of the story? Like the tree stays? Or if I understood, maybe it gets reevaluated out like as the pool is removed? Does that happen? Is there further arborist review of it or?
The project arborist will need to continue evaluation throughout the construction on site and the applicant will need to keep us updated. And if for some reason the, there was something noted, then we would have to come back and we would discuss this with the Conservation Committee to determine what may need to, if it needs to be removed, what an alternative could be and, and if then, I, I hope I answered that. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. No.
He'll, he'll be monitoring reconstruction. And we've propped trees and cable. This isn't anything new. It's just, this is the way to solve this problem.
Yeah, if it could not be retained, then we would go to the Conservation Committee.
Commissioner, do you have any items?
I guess I just want to ask the staff on the driveway. The appulant mentioned that the driveways into the setbacks, I actually thought you were allowed to be in the setbacks, but can you comment on that?
It needed to drive through. The planning has allowed, you know, a portion of a driveway to be located within the setbacks if, if, if needed, I mean, driveways go through setbacks. As you know, to, in order to access your parcel. So town, the staff wasn't concerned with the location.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you. There's an issue regarding the. The garage and the, sounds like a storage shed and a question of whether it can be moved further as the drawing was to the left. Do you have thoughts on that or can you speak to that issue?
We al- we already moved the garage in this five feet and I think what the appulant was alluding to is it's just a covered porch for the exit of the garage and entry. Facing the house shelter, no different than entry door at the main house. It's just a small porch, shed roof, non-visible. But the actual size of the garage actually reduced slightly in this, in this modification. The footprint did reduce. In four. But no, it, it can't move any further. We're going to have to, we need that coverage. We had it on the previous one. If we keep going any farther, we're going to be heading into some other trees.
And you changed the orientation since you were here last time, right?
Correct. The orientation change allowed us to drop the finished floor a little bit in combination of plate height. So those are the, it's a domino effect to, to, you know, to reduce the height by a couple.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I have no further items. Think we're now appropriate to, it's appropriate to raise the issue to members of the public. Unless there.
Yeah.
Are further.
So. There are no hands raised, Mr. Chair.
Well, during, nothing further, the. The public hearing is hereby closed and is appropriate for discussion. Commissioner Kupsel, can you pick us off?
Sure. No, it's good to have conversations about all these things and thank you to Dana and Gina for reviewing and writing these notes. That was super helpful to understand what's been resolved so far. So it's looking promising to me. The hedge is not a problem and I feel certain with Dana and ASEC on it, it will not be a hedge. It gets looked at again. The garage, I'm pleased that it got moved a little and feels or appears shorter, which is nice. I heard, I was not here at the last meeting, but I listened to it and I understand that the water runoff from the tent, from the whole property, as always, will be scrutinized carefully by the professionals. So I feel good about that. And the driveway looks appropriate and similar to what I see at many places. Seems okay. So I'm leaning towards thinking the project is suitable and, and good enough, good for the neighbors.
Yeah, I don't have much further comment compared above what was discussed in our last meeting. I, we talked a lot about the tennis court and geology issues there, and I'm generally comfortable leaving that to the processes with the town engineers and geologists that the building permit will go through. Glad that during this time that the provisions have helped things with the appellate at least a little bit. I, yeah, I did note these questions about the tree number thirty-two and the fact that arborists had recommended removal. I, I was considering if we wanted to remove that as a condition. I think after hearing the answers from the ASEC Commissioner Dana Breen and staff about how the arborist will continue to review it, I think I'm, I think I'm okay leaving that one alone. So. Yeah, I don't think I have further discussion at this time.
Mr. Brothers?
Unlike Ann, I was here the last time we heard this and raised a few concerns then and you know, voted to have Dana and Gina take a look at this. And I think they've done their usual extraordinary job. I think the appellant is to be congratulated, maybe that's the wrong word, for taking another look at the garage. I think that was something that was bothering me a bit and.
Yeah, you meant applicant.
I meant the applicant. I looked at the applicant and said, appellant, excuse me. I was up late last night in case you didn't. Didn't know there was an election. And so I think the other issues that have come up today, I think I didn't hear the discussion of the setback last time, but that's not bothering me. So I'm, I'm, I'm very much inclined to accept the staff recommendation to accept the ASEC's action and be done with this one.
I think that we are nearing a consensus here. I'm not going to repeat what what's just been said, other than again to note that I think this process has been a very positive one. There's a lot of expertise within the commissions and once again, that's been shown. Both with Commissioner Breen and Gina. And I saw that Carter was in play as well, and I'm sure others. That the appellant bringing the issue I think has created a better project. Both hopefully for himself and his family. Also for the applicant who also is to be congratulated and recognized for the movement, not just of the, of the garage, but generally of the project as a support. So we, we appreciate that. We appreciate you in having brought the issue forward and creating was not, not a perfectly adequate solution, a better solution than what we had before. Do we have a motion?
Ask one quick question.
Of course.
And staff, in the last meeting, there was a question about removing the story poles and if we deny the appeal today, does that enable the applicant to remove the story poles or do we need to do anything else?
It would be ten, at the end of the appeal period.
They could still.
Yes, there's a fifteen day appeal period following. So once the appeal period ends, yeah, it could be removed.
Did you say ten days?
Ten days.
Didn't, didn't hear you. Okay.
Thank you. Also, clarification as to process. It's unusual. We have a, the appellant has raised a question. It would be unusual to recognize an appellant at this point in time. I don't see a problem with it unless there's an objection from any of the commissioners. Hearing that, if you can come and join us. And state.
I, it's Ben Malka. I wanted to ask the process question about making sure that we understand what's going on with particularly the drainage and geology of the court and the rest of the project. And how do we stay on top of that? So we know where things are going. It wasn't clear to me after today that we ever see anything.
Going to refer the question to staff, please.
It, it'll be addressed as a part of the building permit process and the, the town, town geologist and other experts will take a look, will take a look at the issue. It'll be, it'll be addressed as part of the review of the building permit, at the building permit process and the ASEC commissioners, that subcommittee will, will take a look at those plans as well.
How do we see them? Will the neighbors see them? Is the question.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to you so you can take a look.
I appreciate that.
I see that staff member one may have a question.
I just wanted to clarify for the story poles. So the story poles are fifteen days after, which is, that is the appeal period and then no less than ten days following the appeal period. So twenty-five days they are required then to be taken down. So if appeal is not filed within fifteen days, then within ten days after that.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate you being able to respond in real time and let it be noted that staff will reach out to the appellant.
Can I ask one more question?
Please, please go ahead, Commissioner Zinski. Do you have further questions?
For staff, if we want to deny the appeal, do we? There, there's alternatives one and two in our agenda packet, one being to uphold the ASEC's conditions of approval and two, the conditions of approval as revised by the Planning Commission. So would the appropriate one be number two, since we revised them in our last meeting?
The, the staff recommendation is to to deny the appeal and uphold the, the July eighth decision with the revised conditions that are, that have been discussed.
Including from the Planning Commission.
Correct.
September eighteenth.
Correct.
Okay.
And as further revised by the, presumably by the ASEC Subcommittee.
But they didn't revise the condition.
They responded to our questions.
They just clarified.
Were there not further items that were included?
Not besides the input from the Planning Commission to revisit the garage design. And so that is added in the draft resolution right now and will be included as part of the final resolution. That revisited design. And it also includes the ASEC Commission's conditions that are already listed in the July nineteen, twenty twenty-four approval letter. So it upholds those and then adds that revisiting the garage design.
Jamie, can you tell me what page the resolution is on in our packet?
Page twenty-one.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I am busy piling through, doing the same thing that you are.
Right. Let me just read it again in light of what we talked about.
Jamie, would it be possible for you to walk us through the resolution?
Just what, give me just a moment. I have to bring it up. I don't have it up right now. Sorry, my computer's taking just a moment. I'm actually grabbing the agenda, which probably didn't need to do. It's been a long day. So. Let me turn on the, okay. Let me maximize my screen here for just a minute, in a moment. Okay. So.
There we go.
Okay. So apologies. So you guys get to see everything I have here. So I'm walking you through, this is just starting at the, the project description. And, and then second, that we are noting that we, that this went to AS, an ASEC meeting on July eighth, twenty twenty-four. And that there's conditions to be reviewed by two ASEC members at the time of building permit submittal. Those are included in the approval letter that I've stated was provided on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Then with the, the appeal being filed by eight thirty-five Westridge parcel owners on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And then the, the requirement for the Planning Commission acting as a board of adjustment to review in a public hearing. I am next that the appeal meeting was continued, that it was first on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And that continued meeting was for the Board of Adjustments, the Board of Adjustment would review the updated plans submitted by the applicant that with respect to the conditions of approval at the ASEC meeting and the additional provided direction by the Board of Adjustment and that that was in fact reviewed by the two ASEC members, the ad hoc committee that was created, it doesn't say in this, but the ad hoc committee created on October fourteenth and the applicants provided the information on the sixteenth that was then reviewed by the two ASEC members and that the request is to deny the appeal and uphold the July eighth, twenty twenty-four decision to approve the ASEC decision with added conditions to be included in the updated approval letter that states the applicant so shall revisit the garage design through the consideration of height, location, screening and orientation. And that the project is exempt. And that the project is exempt to seek by seek to sequo. And that that is consist, the project is consistent with the, the general plan, the zoning code, the design guidelines. And then the updated information included in the, the information included in the updated staff report is included then within this resolution as well. That contains the updated information provided by the applicant. So as you can see, it just goes through and this is all contained also within the staff report. Then it's included in the resolution and then it ends right here on page twenty-five. And this is again, I'm not trying to rush through this, but this is the same information that is included in the staff report above, beginning on probably the second page of I'm not going to flip through and make everyone dizzy. So does that, I hope that explains.
Yeah, thank you. That is helpful. That also provides, of course, the findings that need to be made. And those are recognized.
I move we adopt the resolution.
I second it.
I I, I, I'm, I'm pausing only because I believe that Commissioner Krasinski said that he had two questions, one of which we may have heard.
How's it?
If there are no further, then we're properly in order and we have the question moved, we have a second, so we should have.
Just to clarify the
if I, the, the, the rec, the the motion is for the adoption of the resolution?
Right. As it was set forth in our package.
Mr. Just, just to clarify, this is to, this is to deny the appeal and, and adopt the resolution?
Correct.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second.
Absolutely. Chair Targ?
Aye.
Vice Chair Brothers?
Yes, in favor.
Commissioner Kofsl?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasinski?
Yes.
You have a four, zero vote. The resolution passed.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Jamie? And commissioners? We are now moving forward to commission, staff reports, committee reports, recommendations. Mission reports. I'm going to extend some latitude on this item. Given that I'm aware that there are, well, at least I believe that there are some items that are likely to come up from members of the commission. Are, are there, are there any, I'd like to start first with the commission and then move to staff. Are there any commission reports and or recommendations?
I, I would like to know when the dear colleagues memo that I circulated and then because I had some wrong emails you circulated will be put on our agenda. I guess that's not a commissioner report. That's a commissioner question.
They said that, that this will be, can you, can you please state this in the positive as to when you would like to see it?
I'd like to report that I would like to have that on our agenda. I, I don't know the date when our members are, I don't know what dates we have planned to actually have meetings. I mean, I know when we're supposed to have meetings and I know we've got the wedge. And I know we've got the holidays and I don't know what we're going to do if we're going to have a change of commissioners. So I'd like to have it put in that context. It would probably make the most sense to, if we start it now, not get very far with it until we have our new commissioners appointed. So it's in that context that I asked, I'd, I'd like to get us started. I'd like, I mean, I took the trouble to write it. I'd like to get started on it. And I think having Anne and John, who I think are near the end of their commissions, their appointments, discuss it with us would be very helpful. So I'd like to see it on an agenda before the end of the year.
That would be the recommendation.
Yeah. Tell me what the topic is. I don't think I got that.
I didn't have your right email address, but then Terrence did send it out after our last meeting, which you missed. It was a discussion that John and I had started to have about the formalizing, not formalizing the role, but formalizing the discussion or, or having more discussion of what our role is, what are the limits are. So for example, are we really to serve and receive an informational briefing on a topic or are we only to meet on when, when specific things are brought up by staff? A lot of those things have been done sort of by, you know, I don't know, by folklore or by tradition. And so I raised the question of whether we should raise more. I also did some homework on three or four towns around here. We don't even have a written description of the planning commission. We have a partial sentence on the website and even Woodside has like two paragraphs describing it. So I thought it would just be useful. I find in my goings on around town, many people don't understand the difference between the commissions and the committees and how we set our agenda. And during that period before Terrence was here, we went a long time without meetings and there were a lot of questions about it. And I think if we had I, I'm, I'm not, not trying to expand or to contract or, or, or not necessarily, but to try to think about if there's parts of this that we should write up. So my recommendation was that we form a subcommittee to look at the issues and I wrote up two or three pages of questions for the subcommittee to think about. A related topic just popped into my head is the question of do we have to, if we, if we don't feel like we have existing jurisdiction, do we have to wait till it gets delegated down from a council? And how do we work that relationship? There's a lot of things that have come up in the two years I've been here that sort of haven't been dealt with and with the transition at staff. See if they'll fall in a vague thing. Could you you, Terrence, can you make sure to send that dear colleagues memo to Anne for me, please?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Probably got lost somewhere because I didn't know the protocol. And Terrence and I didn't communicate very well. So I'd like to see that agendized maybe in, in December. Get a start on it.
Thank you.
Your December fourth, December fourth meeting would be appropriate.
Okay. And Anne, the action item is basically to have a preliminary discussion and to put together a subcommittee to come back.
So can I ask that can I ask that you work with parents to appropriately spoke about?
Sure.
Get back with me so that they would know what to expect in advance. I would appreciate that as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Are there other reports, recommendations or brief questions?
I can make a report. I was appointed to the ad hoc side evaluation committee in our last meeting. And that committee has now been formed by the council. The Dana Breen is the representative from ASCC and the members from the public are Karen Askey, Nona Ciorello, Jasmin Gray and Karen Vatra. And trying to schedule a meeting within the next couple of weeks, not, don't have a date confirmed yet. And one thing that was a little bit surprising to me is that it will, as far as I understand, be a Brown Act committee, which I think means that any sites we discuss will be public.
Agendized.
And the meetings will be public. Everybody can listen.
That's right. I hadn't been expecting it to be Brown Act.
Well, thank you very much for, for speaking that well. Already hearing it never seems it progresses. Yes, indeed. Are there other items? Attorney staff?
Sure. Just to, just to remind the commission that we will, you will be having a special meeting on the eighteenth to review, at six P M. To, to review the, the Portola Terrace, otherwise known as the Stanford Wedge Project. That was, that was heard last week by the ASCC and we'll be, we'll be coming forward at that meeting for you. Just wanted to, since it's a special meeting, wanted to draw your attention to it.
Terrence, would you be able to put an announcement on the PV forum about that too, especially because it's a different time?
Yes.
Thank you.
We, what is, we've got the feedback on the housing element from HCD and what is the process now for getting that?
With respect to, if I may, to the Stanford Terrace, I believe that two of us will be refusing ourselves from that, which will at present create a body of two and hopefully three.
I think John will be back.
I believe that staff confirmed with all of us that we would be able to make that specific dating time.
Very good. So you'll be sharing that.
And actually, I'd like to apologize. We, the notice that was just, that was just published for that meeting says seven P M. So we had, we had talked about being six P M., but that fell through the crack. So it is going to be at seven P M.
Oh, it is seven. So it's going to be seven.
But we can still make a reminder on the PV forum.
Yeah.
It was six P M. in the calendar.
Yes, I know, but it just, the wire got crossed. So it got, it got noticed at seven P M. Sorry.
And that's the only topic on that day or that meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Did you catch my question?
Can you please restate your question?
The, we got the, for our housing element, we got the feedback from HCD. So what's the process now?
I'll be making a presentation to the town council in the near future to talk, to talk about staff's proposal for how, how we're going to respond. Basically a structure for our, our response to their letter.
And then would it anticipate to come back to planning commission?
It's not agenda, so we can't talk about it in detail, but, but any changes to address the, the concerns of the state? If they're, if they have to do a zoning, we'll of course come back to the commission for consideration.
To the extent that council chooses to have it come back to us, also of course, has the discretion to resolve the issues.
Correct.
Given timing, I am agnostic as to what council may or may not do. Thank you. Are there other items?
Nothing further, sir.
Thank you very much. It's become at least our custom to open the, this agenda's item up to to the public. I'm not actually convinced that that's necessary. That is to say, required, but keeping with tradition. Do we have any comments that we have, let it be observed? Only the commission within the old schoolhouse and staff, of course, are the members of the public.
There are no hands raised.
With that, we're moving swiftly to minutes. To the minutes, to approved minutes of October sixteenth.
I have a couple of comments and I'm sure they, that the minutes were drafted because I, I'm, I'm sure my comments come out of the fact that we were having technical problems, but on page one, it says, Betsy M. Think you should respect her enough to put in her last name, which is Morgan Fowler. M O, as it, just like it sounds. And then in the next paragraph, it's Christie Corley. C O R L E Y, just like it sounds. Yeah. Page at the time thirty-eight, twenty-five, where we talked about closing the public comment. There's no apostrophe in my name. Those are my only changes. Just, just really basically. I have other like things.
Let me just note that how cool would it be to have a possessive in your name?
I do.
Maybe it's actually a model stock. Are there other corrections or items that would like to be referenced within the?
I have a very small one. My name is hyphenated and I capitalize the K and the S and these don't have the S capitalized. Not earth shattering, for sure.
Well, it might be fun to have a possessive in your name. A lot of people though have apostrophes.
I know. I was just thinking about that. As it may be.
You guys have any comments from the minutes? I move we adopt the minutes as corrected for October.
I believe we're also taking public comment or your opening hearing on the minutes.
On the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Sorry if I'm out of order.
Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised.
We, we return to the commission.
I will repeat my comment. Move adoption of the minutes.
Is there a second?
A second then?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Done. And no extensions hearing none. Let it be reflected that it passes unanimously. Imposing a meeting and not actually asking permission to disclose a meeting.
Now there's a hand up.
Thank you for taking, thank you for taking my very quick comment. I just want to congratulate our interim person, planning person on being part of the council in Newark. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Thanks, Rita.
Thank you.
To be sure.
Thank you.